We, Mark and Amy will not be here, so that's item number six. And I'm not exactly sure who is all going to be here for the rocks. I know Carrie is here, but I think they're waiting for someone from Kansas. Otherwise, that's all I can...
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that one change. The second section, eliminating number six.
I'll second David's motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carried. Approve number six of the April 15th council meetings.
Mayor, could you speak up, please?
Approve minutes of April 6th and April 15th, the council meetings. Okay, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carried.
The Beck Drive gas line, Mid-American Avenue, total that they have is $4,750.
So this does turn it into a team, right?
Yes.
And it actually makes two complete loops around Beck Drive, down Linda, Anderson, and Lee. And really, there's one bigger loop all the way around. I don't think we're gonna get it any less expensive than this, and I realize that $4,700 is a chunk of change, but we've seen a couple houses go up now on Beck Drive, and I think that others couldn't follow. We could either piecemeal this all together, or just keep doing a little bit at a time, or just get it over with. The money's gonna come back, granted, it's maybe not gonna come back instantly, but it will return to us. Well, I would think it'd be better to go ahead and get the thing done now, it'll be done, except we'll get a motion to install it.
I'll make a motion to install the Beck Drive gas line approximately 900 feet at $10 per foot.
Can you add the total cost?
It's a total of $9,000.
Total cost is $4,700.
$4,700.
Oh, sorry, $4,750.
I'll second that motion. Do you have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carried. Motion to approve warrants. I didn't see anything in my file, anybody else have it?
You don't?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carried. Now, we need to adjourn the old council, shouldn't call it the old council.
I made a motion to adjourn it at the end of this year.
Well, I can say...
The 2019, 2020 council.
Motion to adjourn the council. Dan made it. Dan did it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carries for adjourned at 6:05. Now, 6:05, we're open to new council. Well, number two, I don't think you have to do anything here, sir. Yes, okay. Interview candidates. So we would need a motion to enter executive session. Do we have candidates here for four, two? Okay.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session, respect to SDCL 1-25-2-1.
I'll second Melissa's motion. We have a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Cote? Motion carried for executive session at 6:07.
You told me the reason why you were changing it is because, quote, you don't know. I feel all councils should work on different committees to know how each part of the city works. Yet...
See, I tried to hear that last year.
Yeah.
You were completely against it, so we gave you one way, but you're wrong.
I never said I was completely against it.
But I still feel the same, we need people making work on different committees, and that's why I changed it.
So if Dave is still on the golf course?
Dan, but I didn't hear anything.
Why doesn't Dave still the chair of golf course, then? I mean, I believe he should be, because he's the most qualified to do it. I just think the logic's a little flawed. And I've got the last...
Why is he still on the golf course?
Yeah. If you think that everybody needs to learn something new, I mean, I know nothing about golf course, so by your logic, I should be chair of golf course.
Um...
Because I know nothing about it, and I need to learn how it is.
You realize all that he does affects...
Yeah, I do, and I'm saying, I agree with your decision to put him there. He should be on, because he needs to go, he's the most qualified to do it.
So you're completely against what I'm doing here?
I am against someone making a decision not based on individuals' qualifications.
You're...
So if you're telling me...
You're against my decision on how I did this?
I am, you can do whatever you want, I don't care, keep it how you want it. I'm just letting, I'm expressing my opinion, that whenever assigning these committees, you should be doing it based on who knows what about what, and who would be best to serve our community.
David is not, he's on one committee that he was on last year. The other committee he was not, he was on the library last year, he's not on that either.
Okay.
And what other committee were you on last year?
Auditorium. Oh, I guess he's traveled together.
But your own public safety issue, so...
I mean, I know nothing about Water and Streets.
Well, see, that's how come I want people on different committees.
I know, so you can't have it both ways. You're saying that you want the most qualified people to do the job, but you want everybody to be on different committees, so which one is it?
Are you on any committee that you were on last year?
I don't...
No?
No.
Not at all?
Okay.
Well, I'm not gonna change you, and if everybody on the city council is completely against what I've done here, then I want you to say so.
The only thing that I have to do is if you take everybody off of one committee and put a whole group, if you left one person on that committee from before, they would have some kind of knowledge of it before, and then two people come with them, and but you'd have somebody that would have some kind of knowledge for that area.
I think that if you look at this...
I don't have 2019, I'm just saying, that's why...
You'd probably find somebody that's been on one of these committees before.
If you were, like, if I was on something, and I was the chair, it wouldn't have to be the chair, if you were on that committee and put somebody else as the chair, but yet you would have a little knowledge to give to that person. You see what I'm saying? I'm not saying that it's all wrong, I'm just saying, if one person has some knowledge about that, is still on that to help the other two. I get what you're saying, we should all learn everything, yes, but we might learn more if we had, didn't have to start over, square one.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Like I said, I'm gonna leave it like this, if all five of you wanna change it, then say so now, and we'll go back and leave the whole damn thing like it was last year, or whatever you wanna do, let's say it now. Well, what do you guys think? I mean, I see value in eliminating the both sides. I do understand that we need people to learn different parts of the city, but at the same time, I also know that when you start to work with a committee, and you start getting somewhere, and then all of a sudden, you're taking off, taking off that committee, it's almost like the ball's being dropped. So...
I mean, I've got one year left of my term, I just wanna finish what I started with the committees, and then on for two years, and wrap it up, and walk away feeling like I'd accomplished something, and now you want me to spend the next year learning something big, and then a year from now, I'm not even gonna be on Capitol, probably, and somebody could run against me, or I could just choose not to run, and then I'd bring all this good stuff, but for what? Whereas if I stayed where I am...
Okay, we don't have time to discuss this all night. If you wanna just go back to last year, and do the same thing you were doing last year, do it, but let's say it now, get it over with, and so we can move on on this thing. There was a complaint, too, about how long these meetings were lasting, so we don't need to spread this out any further. If you wanted, if you want, if all five of you wanna do it like last year, do it, otherwise do it this way, let's say so right now, let's go back to last year, last year, do it.
Okay, how would you like Cemetery and Community Center to move to new? That should be only had eight, and now we have ten. And with respect to the comments that were made earlier, so last year, Linda, you were on library and auditorium, and you were on Water and Street, so this year, you still are on library and auditorium, and yes, you have moved off of Water and Street, but let's see what's your, you are on golf course now, and community center. But, I mean, if you compare the 19 to 20, there's a few cases where people are completely new, but for the most part, people are in their same areas, so...
What, what about just adding, just the cemetery and the community center, leave them like the manner had them here, just add them?
Yeah, I agree with that. So all of the other, what, seven, eight, are gonna remain like 2019, but add Cemetery and Community Center like, like the mayor has suggested for 2020. Okay? Is everybody okay with that?
No, but if you guys are, you're the ones that have to... Okay, we're gonna move on. RLC, I'm sure, sure, we'll be ready here.
I'm running, I may want to...
Nobody here?
No.
Okay. We don't have any questions. Hope there's one in mind, is there?
Public input.
Are you calling public input?
Yeah. We call them, we're the second, right? And she is for now, number seven.
Okay. Public input, me. At your place at the table, there is a thing on the variance. This is a case that was argued, and was achieved. It has, yes, it's got Mr. Nelson's father's name on it, who successfully argued this, and it's in adverse to what you folks did. Just wanted to show that to you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Larson, what are we looking at?
She's listening.
Yes, it's the, that's the Supreme Court thing. They found in favor of the folks that didn't want the, whatever it was built back, people that owned property near that. I will leave that to you to read, I'm still carrying on with my objection to the variance. I believe that there's an additional problem, because that building appears to be higher than what it was approved. This is a, I can't think of the term now, darn it. It's a charged variance, or a, or a, and what it is, is it's a quit clerk quo, and it's illegal. And it should be backed off, the guy's going ahead on it, that's his problem, but the building needs to come down. Going on, the part that's got the headlines on it, this is a recall petition in 2000. Group of people came to me and asked me to help them recall the mayor. This is a process, the second page, I did the thing, we collected these signatures, 128 signatures, because of what the mayor was doing, and the second article is that where I didn't do a good enough job being specific. So, we turned around, once it got kicked out, we turned around, and we refiled, and got new signatures that were more specific. The, the third one shows talks about that. I got the signatures, and we revisited the recall, and the night that the signatures were to be presented to the council, that mayor shifty resigned. So, just be aware of the process, and I am more schooled in the process than what I was. There's things that are going on that are justifiable cause for recall.
So is this a threat?
It's a promise. The other thing is, the two meetings that are coming up, the thing for two meetings in a month, we don't need two meetings in a month, that's an extra expense, and we need to get things done. The mayor's in charge of running the meeting, and things that are appearing on the agenda aren't necessary to be dealt with in a meeting. It's penny ante stuff, it's not, it's nothing that, that asks for, asks for a vote, and the mayor isn't explaining it, it's the bookkeeper. And there's too many executive sessions in the previous years. If there were four, if there were four to six executive sessions during the year, that was unusual. Now we're having two and three per meeting. That's, that shouldn't be happening. First of all, it tells me that executive sessions are being violated, other things are being discussed. The other thing is, is we do not have a city manager, we have a city finance officer, and there's been overreach. Just letting you know. And in reference to the committees, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Larson, and Mr. Kene, when they assigned committees, they had one carryover, so that the person had experience on the committee. And the committee members, the chairs, were picked with their expertise, not throw the dice and pick out whatever. So, that's everything I have.
I have a question, Mrs. Larson. Can you summarize the findings of the court, so I don't have to go through four pages of legal stuff here?
The court, they, they accepted some, and they rejected some. One, it dealt with some of the things, who had the right to, to speak, but essentially, the guy couldn't put the building back up. It violated, it violated ordinance, and it violated covenants. Right?
I'll let you know next time.
Well, and the thing is, is that, you know, I don't know what it'd be a, a thing, if, if I hired Mr. Nelson to come in and work for me, or is that a conflict of interest?
That'd be a conflict, very much as I...
I kind, I kinda figured so, but...
Much as I'm sure we enjoy your business, I think it'd be...
But, the thing is, is that these people, when they bought the property, the covenants were in force, and nobody could come in with a garage, or its residence. I've heard that there's a residence in there, don't see that happening, 'cause I've walked by there. The other thing is, I've heard, is that it's gonna be, well, it's gonna be a repair shop, that isn't gonna cut it. There's too many, too many shortcuts that have been happening, and again, like I said, it's, it's, there's, it's problematic, and...
I just wanna understand where you're coming from. Are you, I understand you have any concerns, but is your primary concern, the building is violating the covenants that went in and that development was made?
That is violating, the covenants were there to protect the people who own property, who spent a lot of their money on a piece of property, and they come in with a hubble. And that's my character, characterization, I don't care how much stainless steel, or steel that you put on it, it's still non-conforming, and if I owned a $300,000 house sitting right next to it, if I was Randy Boyer, I'd be pissed, because that takes the value of his house down. The other thing is, the city's not getting the revenue off a garage. They can always, the city can come in and say, well, if you're gonna put a garage up, you're gonna pay a level of $100,000 taxes, property taxes, because you guys are losing property taxes. You're losing, is there a minimum? I didn't see any electrical hooked up, I assume there may be water, I don't know. And again, violated, violated the zoning, because the paper that's posted on the property is just a form, there's no signature, there's nothing. You have to walk up, you have to trespass on Mr. Johnson's property to see the signed, the signed documents, so if you were looking for it, it's, it's not on the property, he's not, he's violated most of the, most of the thing, most of the code. He knew he was going to need a variance, it showed clearly on the application, but that was left for a later date. He said that he contacted Mr. McGill, and that it needed to be pushed back from December, the discussion from December to January, because he was gonna bring in the decision. To my best of my knowledge, that never happened. He lied to you guys, because I, I watched it, it's on video. And, you know, the other thing is, is that Pat stood there and said that we talked to Mr. McGill, there's no privacy issues, or, because city employee is there. Why is a city employee talking with a, a person, that's also a council member, on a variance, to a lawyer that tells him that the covenants are out of date? Lots of questions, lots of questions, and proprietary. So, there we go.
Does anybody have a question? Okay. Water wastewater, Dana, you're not here.
Uh, Dana was home sick today, but just so you know, when we got our wastewater permit, he did kind of talk to you about that last winter, he said during the winter months, the state was going to allow them to do this test on Monday, and Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then just make one trip to some cause, well, this is the start of this week for very big test to run, test of on Monday, Tuesday, I'm gonna say. So, we did that this morning.
For how long was that?
Well, I don't know if they're going to give the grace in the winter months again. I'm hoping that this won't be the case, but I'm sure it will be during the summer months.
Was there any reason why that came?
It's just our commitment, it's, we, that's been along with our commitment, they wanted more testing, and different testing.
So that's everything?
Everything.
Remember, he's a hardworking company, extremely hardworking, I'm doing it.
Um, he hasn't been down to the wastewater plant yet, he's been activating himself with the cemetery, and then he's also been doing some mowing and maintenance of the park, getting that ready, and then helping Lani in the shop with equipment, so, and he should be coming by tonight at seven, when he's done out of the...
Okay, thank you. Great updates, swimming pool, following, not here?
No, he had that tonight, and he did not have any updates for you, and I asked if he had any opinion on the swimming pool, and he said that whatever you guys decide, the swimming pool has been scooped out, so all of the debris, and he only leaves a couple weeks, so if you feel unsure of making a decision tonight, and if you decided to allow a little bit more time and have a special meeting and make in the middle of the month, he, he, that would be enough time for him to get that running by June 1st.
Is that, when did we open it last year?
Yeah, we opened it on June 1st.
Okay, and, and I don't know, obviously we've all seen the weather reports for the next two weeks, I mean, unseasonably cold, even to the point of close to freezing, if not freezing, so obviously, maybe this is a blessing in disguise, that we waited a little while, but I, I think we should wait and just see what happens in the next two weeks, because you never know, they may, this may rear its ugly head yet, and we may not miss anything before it works out. When is, what's the date for our June meeting?
June 1st. It's a date.
Although that would be, we may have to... No, we could, we could, we could still open it by the 15th, if we decide on June 1st.
I have a comment to make, um, we have a lot of lifeguards that are on the air that don't know what they're doing, and some of them are looking for second jobs. I know that this is all a concern, but we have got to let them know, you know, some, rather than a couple of days before, or what have you, because I know that two of the five have gotten different jobs. I'm assuming that they'll keep both, but...
And our meeting is June 1st.
So, Linda, do you think the people that we have on staff would, that would be doing their lifeguarding, or have a problem with if we wait till the 15th of June to open it? Are they gonna find other, other jobs, and not be available?
You know, that's a very good question, and then you also have to think about swimming lessons, when are you gonna fit swimming lessons in? Usually have two sessions, one in June, one in July.
I think that's something that needs to be addressed, maybe that is only gonna be one session.
And that's fine, but that's a lot of their hours, that's a lot of those WSAT hours, and they have to pay for that course.
I have two concerns, one is just whether or not it's a good idea to open period, like you said, this, we see the spike in the summer months, another is, even if we do open the pool, are people gonna be brave enough to even come out to swim in? Do we really wanna spend all the time on getting the pool ready, just to have nobody show up to swim in?
And one of the concerns that was originally, when we talked about the ordinance that we put into place about nominating the people, that's when I found that article about pool safety, and opening, and they hold it. And as with a lot of the larger business space, it can be based off of square footage versus based off of the number of tent, you know, 10, 10 people or less. So, that's what that map is, that gives you square footage of the pool deck, as well as the pool, and then the small, the baby pool. So based on the pool deck and the large pool, it would allow for capacity of 26 people eating the six-foot...
Twenty, twenty-six, baby pool and?
No, 26 in the baby pool.
Not counting the baby pool.
The baby pool...
Do you think we have 26 kids there in an hour?
Uh, you know, sometimes...
Seventy-nine.
Sometimes a whole family, you know, will come, and, so, yeah, there are, there are common cookie times that we've had 26, with mothers or parents watching their kids, if you're not able to meet them. And then the baby pool, that's particular, the baby pool is a smaller... And then the baby pool, that's particular, like the baby pool is smaller, would be limited to five.
That's one of the real problems.
That's the problem.
You'll have eight kids in there.
Yeah.
You do have one other problem, cleaning the toilets after each use, both in the restrooms and in the pool area.
Have you heard about town...
Unfortunately, we are one of the earlier meetings. So a lot of towns have their normal first, counseling the second Monday of the month. And so, I don't have an authority.
You had a list last time.
Last, last...
I did a lot of them until further notice.
But, but some of them were, no, they just aren't open. And they may even say, "Well, we are..." I mean, wouldn't we work through to area of type of cautions rather than, as you said, expend all of the money and time and energy and everything? Think of the water waste. Fill that pool, nobody comes.
The news I've been watching, even in jurisdiction states and other jurisdictions that are opening up, people still are coming out.
Yeah.
After it's opening up, people are still making the decision not going there.
Except the teachers, they're back, you know? And kids haven't had anything to do for two months.
I, I am surprised with this, not that I don't want to go, but I do.
It's tough, very tough.
Well, could we plan to open it June 1st? And if things happen in our, in our June 1st meeting, we can siphon it out, wash the park?
We certainly could. We certainly could say that we're gonna open it June 1st and then have the residency meeting. If we had to, do, we could cancel all the plans and shut it down. Exactly. Then we've got the restrooms in the park.
At this point, the restrooms and the closed shelter are locked. So, I don't know, and later on we'll be talking about the repeal of that ordinance. So, if you want to address the restrooms at that time or if you want to address...
Restrooms need to be cleaned after every use, we should just want out.
We have to lock them, lock them.
So the people also can't wash their hands if they aren't going to the park.
Well, maybe they gotta bring their own hands sanitizer.
Yeah, it's about their hands, you know, you can do...
There is, there is a faucet on the back of that. Restroom.
You're right, come on outside.
Is that shut off though as we don't have the toilet on? I haven't tried it.
We could turn the toilet on and make sure that faucet would work.
And then is it possible for somebody to turn it open and leave it open and just...
Oh, no, that never happened.
Okay. Lauren, treasure the garbage, but...
Could that...
Most change now to...
I just couldn't handle that, was planning on doing June 1st. But the governor can shut us down at any time. You know, she'll make that decision to shut it down. Still, that's why I had to do it, not necessarily do it. Okay, I just don't know what to say.
So without those two, could we have that?
No, we don't have like those two.
The other obstacle we have is getting some, the new strain of lifeguards certified. So we have a couple that have never been certified as lifeguard yet and I don't know if they were able to complete their courses.
I don't think they were.
So...
I don't recommend those courses, what would you start from?
They're doing an online feature. So you could do the online feature now and then as soon as the pool opens up, because there's always the, you know, thought process that pool is going to open that they could conduct the actual testing. So, and there was a story on the Red Cross and I did not print that out, but to know, I know they've extended some classes, so, but I don't know how long.
Okay. We'll have to put up signs, making sure that, you know, the numbers are even right.
Yeah, we need to open up, yeah, improve it after, yeah.
Trying to sign up for certain times or something to swim. Like, so one person doesn't have all the slots, you know, because we have...
The swim time is 15 minutes.
Yeah, sounds terrible, but that might be what it has to be.
You get, you get one to two and five other people get two to three?
Yep.
But we still don't have enough.
We still have what?
We still don't have enough lifeguards.
Yeah, she just kept saying that we don't have enough lifeguards even with the people. So, we may be talking about a moot point here. If we don't have enough lifeguards, we should not have a pool.
Yeah. Can they?
Exactly, so...
I think right now the reasons for not opening it outweigh the reasons for it. And that's unfortunate to say.
Do you want to just make the decision now then?
That, that wouldn't be my decision. I understand that other people probably don't feel the same way.
Other councils have, when you look at that list from last month, some of the cities just said, "No, we're just not gonna open it." They just are airing on the side of the...
That was the City of Armour and the City of Spearfish and Arlington, close to Seattle.
I think we sway.
I think just based on the virus scare alone, plus the economic cost of losing all that water and time and effort to get the pool ready, plus the amount of lifeguards, I just don't see how it's gonna happen.
I agree.
If your COVID-19 ordinance allows the mayor to just get the layer closed for less than until that ordinance expires, then we can spend the layer closed if they think the government is more open and can still remain closed even with this ordinance, it's not a fact. Other than that, the debate and discussion, George, you currently have the ability to just have the mayor's gate closed if that's what you all feel you want to do.
Do we know what the average number of minutes that use it a day are?
Uh, probably, uh, it's 15?
15?
I'm gonna say six to 15 kids a day. A lot depends on weather.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
One thing about it is they love to eat. Concessions are tremendous at the pool.
But if Bairsford's closed and Haywarden's closed, guess where they're gonna come if you're open?
I honestly, I think that we, just like you said, there are more arguments to keep it closed than there are open. In fact, I don't think we're in motion, but I think we should make that...
That would be my recommendation.
Recommendation. If we're gonna leave it closed and there's no sense filling it up. Exactly. We need the local lifeguard to know that they're not gonna have a job, don't you? We gotta do that, to be fair to them. So if you're gonna, if you guys think it needs to be kept closed, then we need to do it now. Because we need to give these people the opportunity to find something else. And there's no sense filling the pool and wasting the water and the pouring and the other, whatever else goes in it.
Well, again, I said that's our recommendation, but ultimately, if that's what you wanna do, that's what you wanna do. And if you don't wanna do it, then it's up to you. Or it allows you to make the decision.
It's not gonna be up to me to make that decision. And I tried to make a different decision here and got shot down, I'm not gonna make it.
I agree with Dargo, though, these kids have been hooped up. And I know the virus thing scares everybody to death, but, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, there's, there's the whole deal, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Well, we do need something to keep the kids busy.
Yes.
Is there my name in that vault?
I know.
I did talk to Josh Harrison today and I asked him what those guys decided. Because I, we had heard Rumland's a couple weeks ago, they were thinking about doing just a short season, just during the month of July. They're gonna make their decision on what you guys' decision is for the pool. So they're gonna hold off making their decision on vault.
So, how are they gonna, if we close the pool, are they gonna open up the vault summer rec sooner or...?
They were talking their short season would be just in the month of July.
And there probably would be no concessions. And concessions is sort of useful lights. And they can't get stuff in and out for a short concession season.
Well, it's an unfortunate situation for everybody. Think of the seniors this year, I mean, but the kids that have been bottled up at home, there are adults that have been bottled up at home. There's nothing we can do, but we're actually trying to protect people. We're not trying to be hard-nosed or harsh, you know?
Personally, I think there it is, it's gonna scare them. Because I've been walking at the track and I've seen stuff going on at the school and the kids are maybe eight or 12 years old. They've been doing stepdad at the school. I called somebody the other day and I said I need to watch them for stuff going on. They don't have stuff to do, I'm kinda scared of that.
Well, that's a good point.
That's what I, because I see them driving around my neighborhood, have a crazy way and don't think of such a virus.
You mean like the eight-year-old that's driving the golf cart through the cemetery? Hell-bent for election? I yelled at him.
The other day, they pulled the grass play chicken with my husband coming home on, on his frigerator, coming right in and trying to, they didn't stop. I stopped one day and I said it, I pointed my finger at him and told him to get off the road. I mean, I, I, they were down on that ramp that they've been using for church.
The church, yeah, the prayer.
Skyrocketing up. And I called on that one and said they better start locking it up or we're gonna have other emergency.
Well...
Chief, are you seeing an increasing crime?
Okay, so, what's the final decision you guys are gonna make on this pool? Well, she was just asking, Chief, what, have you seen evidence or more?
Maybe not like big crime right now, but we're still gonna know some stuff like that. As far as the kids, do I see them getting a little more anxious? Yeah, but even to the tune of the high school, they're driving and stuff. There's always a little give and take.
And it could happen a lot.
Yeah.
But I think they're getting...
Challenging you. Oh, I know, I live it too. All right, well, I've spoken my mind, I think the reasons to keep it closed outweigh the reasons to keep it open and that's all I have to say.
That's my opinion too.
Would you like to have a special meeting in a couple weeks to see if things are different?
Because in a couple weeks, you never know, this could, our numbers doubled in this county overnight all of a sudden. So, you can tell that people are loosening up. And as they loosen up, all of a sudden, it's just gonna go nuts. And if it does, then what do we do then, you know? So at least if we did say that, we wouldn't be just shooting it down right now. But I think there's a lot of people that are sitting back going, "What'd they do? What'd they do?" They didn't do anything, now what are we gonna do? I think, I think we need to just decide.
I think, like I say, one thing, I agree, the kids, it's gonna be a struggle, a long hot summer if they don't have anything. But we also, we also have the five employees or whatever they have, and we have to think about their safety as well, so...
Absolutely.
If you're putting on six, 15 kids every day, I don't know. And I agree, it's gonna be a long, hot summer for these kids, it sucks.
And the positive side is once they're in the water, it's chlorine. So that's, that's good. Because the virus can't live in that.
The pool is a, is a kind of a money pit on a good year. I can't even imagine what it would be like if we didn't have a good showing.
How many people do we need to average to even come close to breaking the limit?
I don't think a pool will ever make money for you because the toxic chemical is still...
It's just how much we decide we wanna lose.
Exactly.
Always has to be.
Yeah. Who was Barbs' library, is it?
Yeah. They just dropped you all now. So if we say no, are they going to play ball? Or is that gonna be no ball because we said no from there and then...
Do you think they're going to go inside?
That's what I think. And then there's gonna be nothing for them?
I, I think, I think it's going the other way.
Do you think...
I think they're gonna say, "Not only, not only do we have to do it, we really have to do it now."
Well, that's what I would hope, is if they would decide...
Do that, you wanna have something here from last...
We need to do something for it.
Organization. If they don't have anything anymore, then I need like four officers.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's gonna be terrible.
Well, we've decided, in a meeting we had at the golf course, that we would have summer golf lessons in June, Wednesdays in June. We're limiting it to eight people at a time. And we will never be inside, we'll all be outside. So we can stay away from our park.
So your outdoor restroom facility, is that open?
Well, yes, the, yeah, yeah. And the clubhouse is open now.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, we're talking about the restrooms at the park. Needs to be cleaned after every use. I'm assuming you're not cleaning that bathroom after every use. How can you, you have to be following every single group around.
It's true. That's a lot of...
Well, and I'm not, I'm not saying that necessarily, but again, we're, we're doing two different things.
Yeah.
So, it's really a difficult thing to deal with. I don't know how to deal with it. None of us wants to make a decision that's, you know, gonna be bad for the kids. But, again, just one kid getting sick and dying, one lifeguard getting sick and dying, what's it worth?
Bairsford and Haywarden, has that been checked out?
I have not heard, they did not answer my email that I sent out.
I think every town is just waiting for other towns to decide. Everybody's doing the same thing we're doing.
Exactly.
And somebody needs to make a decision. I guess that's my decision, or that would be my decision if it was my decision.
Sometime I think we maybe need to have a little public input.
That's kind of... Maybe have a special meeting for the weeks and see if we can get side response.
Then it's gotta be advertised, to the point where it's in the newspaper every single edition. We gotta put signs up all over the place. Come to this meeting. And if we gotta do it outside, we'll do it outside so that people can spread out. We'll do it on our loudspeaker, but then we need the input.
The other thing we could do is, we have a pretty good handle who does family memberships or single passes. We could send a letter to those families and ask their input.
That would be a good place to start.
Do you have emails for them so that you wouldn't have to necessarily waste the postage too? Do you have emails for some of those, no? They don't fill that...
Put it up on the website.
You know, well, that'd save a little postage.
Do a website survey.
It's true, we have a website.
We could do that, actually, there's a full Facebook page.
There's all kinds of Facebook pages that we could put it on. You throw it out on Facebook in a couple different places and it'll be all over Facebook.
Well, the pool Facebook page is used for if it's gonna be open or not open because of temperature or what swimming lessons are.
But I mean, even if you mention it on Marketplace or you mention it on the run sale or none, and everything, throw it out there everywhere and then you know it's gonna be seen.
Would you like to do that in order to efficiently make a decision?
I think that would be fine. And then let's just assume we're gonna have to have a special meeting in a couple weeks.
Okay, so we'll get input as much as we can for you and you just... And you just let me know when you want to have that meeting.
Yeah, the city has a Facebook page. Who does? So we can post something.
All right.
If we do, we'll move on to number 10, Lauren Fisher's garbage collection. Continue one-side pickup. Why not where everybody puts their garbage can on, which I've heard.
I think it's a really good idea, but I've had a lady in my ward contact me and she's real concerned about hauling her garbage can down her driveway and across the street during the winter. She doesn't want to slip and fall and break something while she's doing it. She was wondering if it could be on her side of the street from March to November. On the other side of the street, it's the other thing. And I've been thinking about, I don't know, she might be the only elderly person that lives on that street.
My street, every week I hear a new opinion, so they're not big enough. Especially.
They, they want the truck to come to each house.
Not bringing a noun. I don't care, I took out my noun before I came.
Yeah, it's working out great. Yeah, we're on. I've heard it's like.
I can see where that's right. It would be really cool.
Yeah, it's icy.
Well, is he actually asking for it to remain like that year-round or just during the summer months?
He called me this morning and asked. He said, we're going to talk about it tonight, tell me more. Hey, I also had a complaint from an elderly person that couldn't get it across the street. Whether it be ice or snow or.
Any kind of.
Well, we, we, okay.
What would happen if we switched sides of the street?
Then I think she'd be happy.
Yeah, it's a, if there's somebody on the side, he's going to be happy.
I mean, I'm not. Is that going outside? Is that on the side? I never noticed. Or is it on the single side?
I don't remember.
Because I have two in my class. Well, Vicki, your street, do you put it yours or does it go across?
Mine goes down to the shop.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but the other people, where are the blue garbage cans?
They're on both sides. They're, they're on both sides.
That's right, right, they're both sides.
Then in that case, maybe it was one of the streets.
I remember one time I was going out with my classmates and she held her belt down in the driveway.
When, when we originally initiated this, it was because the streets were so soft because of the spring. I think we should say, no, I'm sorry, Lauren, we'll change back. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. And that way, little men and ladies won't have to worry about carrying it across the street in the winter.
The only thing is, we're probably going to want to do it again in the spring.
I agree.
People, people have to realize that to protect our streets, we still will have to do this in the spring.
Suck it up, buttercup. However, we will act, we ask and we'll say, you're right. We want to make it easier for you, especially in the winter months, so. You know, March, April, hey, deal with it, but.
Well, I have to take mine across the street. And the only time I have a problem is when there's a lot of snow.
Yep.
And then they pile the streets and there's a big pile of snow right by the curb. And I got to shovel through that before I can drag it across the lane. That's the only problem that I can foresee. But it is, it would be a problem for a lot of people. So maybe in the wintertime, it should be back to normal. And then in the summer, spring, summer, fall.
What was it this time?
It was July, May sixteen.
So they just.
When did the smarts take?
May?
It's still.
And it's spring, dog, it's soft. I don't think people would be against that.
But that makes sense to me. Because then we're protecting our streets, which again, is protecting everybody's pocket too. So, deal with it.
So then we're going to do it in the summer too? And just switch it from winter? We're just going to do it three months?
Right, exactly.
If we get a lot of rain, we're going to have some streets that are still going to be soft. Down the street is pretty soft too.
Well, we get less name.
There's probably nothing says that if you want to drag your garbage can over the other side of the street, you can. You can.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to say, you know, you don't want your street tore up and it's a problem.
That's a good point. But I'm sure Lauren is not going to be happy with that. But again, we've got constituents that are really not happy, so we've got to deal with that. I think.
How, how many people are complaining?
I am one and there must be two behind mine.
Two or three.
Five people at eight minutes.
You have to be able to listen.
Five people at eight minutes complaining. I mean, I'm not saying the complaints aren't valid.
I would say you want to take out about 200 people because Ward Three is not affected. They didn't have to change sides of the street. So it's Ward One and Two.
So because their streets are fine? Is that why Ward Three is torn white?
Lauren said he needed to do open back anyway on those streets, so.
He makes three passes down Lincoln Drive. He wakes me up. I know, I'm counting. What about a central dump, dumpster in the region during those soft road months? That people could take their garbage whenever it was convenient, instead of the big, huge one, and dump it into a, a central dumpster?
You've got people using the dumpster that don't take use the dumpster?
They, they do already. The park, the park dumpsters get it all the time.
And we have more dumpster damage. And if they're going to add bigger articles that Lauren doesn't take in the garbage can.
Correct. So all the complaints are at Ward Two then?
No, mine's Ward Three.
Well, she has a cul-de-sac.
Oh.
And that's the issue.
And they don't just have to move it across the street?
They're going to be all the way down. I can see that.
I, I couldn't understand.
Yes, I can too. So can we just change it for certain periods?
I'm sure you can.
Because we have complaints in Ward One.
Boy, you're talking about opening up a can of worms.
And Ward One streets are being worse.
You're playing favorites here, you're playing favorites there, but you're not, you know.
No.
It's either all or none. I, I think we've either got to decide, it's like the pool, open it or close it, but get off the pot.
I think there's most like, oh, streets in Ward One are being worse because they are.
I realize.
A what worse?
They, yeah, our, our streets in Ward One are awful. And if we can do anything to keep them as decent as possible for as long as possible, I would prefer to do that.
Do you think there's going to be an issue from May, say, June one on? With, with, are the streets going to get tore up because of the garbage truck?
I don't know, no street actually.
Well, his, his vehicle is the heaviest one that goes down a lot of those streets.
It's not necessarily the street itself, it's, it's the gutter area that gets torn up.
That's where he, he does.
Every spring, when it comes and patches up our guttered street and by June or July, it's torn again. And then you go back and turn it into it's from the garbage truck. Again, that's just my preferences. Has he represented for Ward One? I would like Ward One to stay the way it is. And I can.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard any complaints. And we can't just have it maybe both sides in the wintertime? Or November two? I mean, I don't care, the cul-de-sac, I, I get that, that's a whole different law. Ours is just go walk across the street. Let's not take it, you know, a long way. But in the wintertime, maybe having to go on both sides, then we wouldn't have any older people that have to go across the street. I understand that. Is there two people that come to town? Is there two trucks anymore?
Oh, yeah, Lauren, yes, Lauren is on both trucks.
Because I hear one early and that goes to school. I think I guess the big, big one, am I right? And then one goes down to the village. Because they do go by two or three times.
They used to send a truck that just did dumpsters. And then Lauren's mechanical arm, Lauren drives the truck.
Yeah, all right. Not that that matters, but I was just trying to think.
What would you like me to tell Lauren?
I've spoken my piece.
I personally think, and I know a couple of people that are complaining, that they'll say that, fine, I'm not paying my water bill or my garbage bill, you're not going to pick it up at my house. I, I don't know for sure, but I know their image.
Well, okay.
So then, so then if they're not paying the water or the garbage bill, then they'll just come and get the can and they won't have it anywhere, then what are they going to do?
Take it to the park.
I mean, okay. Don't, I don't pay, don't pay the garbage bill.
I personally think ours should stay the same, that February first to.
May.
May, middle of May, we'll bring it down and the other time.
In front of your house.
They can be in front of your house. That's the cul-de-sac. Because it does, in front of our house, it gets very soft. So I am not against that at all, because it sinks in.
So you're saying February one to May 15th, we do like we're doing that?
Yeah.
And then the rest of the year, starting May 15th, he goes back to picking it up on both sides of the street?
That's really what we said initially. I mean, that's, that's how this whole thing started.
And you can, you can tell on that, I have no problem. And ours, I, that's the complaint, they don't.
Your cul-de-sac is, is natural, it's small. I mean, for a side truck, it's too small.
And I know some people are prepared later and I'm sure it's hard to turn. But I'm not going to, I know that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you want to make a motion for that, to push things along and hopefully it'll get shot. I'll make the motion that we go back to normal pickup on May 15th. And that will last until February first, when the alternate pickup will begin. That'll bring out some phone calls.
Can we do a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go.
I'm opposed.
Tell me if you vote. Okay. Here's one. One vote, four, yes. Okay, motion carried. Please make part of the update.
Uh, yeah, you guys got the stats. And the biggest thing is advertised for part-time and had a couple of applicants and. I don't know if that can wait to get the names though, or this is just.
I did not.
Have you interviewed these people?
Yeah, um, I interviewed Lauren Miller. Lives outside of town here, just a few miles. He, he's a, been an officer, a certified officer for a long time. Worked at a weigh station for coming in and saying South Dakota. Been there a long time and then he's recently worked with Mearsford PD, so.
Is he still at the weigh station?
He is back at the weigh station, yeah.
Yep.
So he's been certified a long time, he's a lot of life experience. Feel like he could help us out now and then. The other one I was going to recommend is Greg Jurich. He's a younger guy, he's a certified officer out of North Sioux City. And again, he's willing to just come up once in a while and cover a few shifts for us. He, he would be less than Lauren Miller. Sounds like Lauren could help us out a little bit more, like on the weekend time, once in a while. Two guys that are both certified and both willing to help out when we need it, so my recommendation is, is those two.
And the rate of pay for part-time officers is 14?
It's 1675 per certified. Uncertified was 1475.
And both of those are certified?
These guys both have their certifications, which is, and they're getting their training through their own respective departments. So they'll stay certified, they can just help out, which is perfect for us.
Do we have to provide them with a vest or anything like that?
Each of them will leave a little bit of equipment. Mainly it'll be like our gun, though. I'll want them to carry our department gun and stuff like that while they're on, which we have.
Can you spell their names?
Yeah. Lauren, L-O-R-N, Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. And Greg is actually Gregory, G-R-E, G-R-Y, Jurich, J-U-R-I-C-H. All certified.
So the rate would be 1675?
Yes, I think that's set in our kind of setup.
In the salary.
Do you know how often you get someone? Is it just like once a month, once a month, twice a month?
I mean, if I use them for one eight-hour shift once a month, I'd be happy. It'd just be, pretty seldom really, but once in a while, if we needed help, they would, they could help out. I guess that was the biggest thing. And the other thing I was worried about was with this COVID stuff. If one of us was supposed to go down for two weeks or whatever the case is, I'd have somebody I could call for a night off. Otherwise, I can't leave, Austin can't leave.
And is Jurich, who slaughters named Jurich?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's in North Sioux right now?
He's a certified officer at North Sioux City. The best thing about both these guys is they've worked in Union County, they know the rest procedures. They know the radio here in Union County. Almost as plug and play as you can be for a part-time person, for me. There is a certain amount of things that have to get them done and squorum in for us, but, but really, just, just to come in and help out, I don't think you could find any better, so.
And his chief is okay with him moving up here?
Yep.
Armed with that recommendation, I would make the motion that we approve hiring Lauren Miller and Greg Jurich at the rate of $16.75 per hour as part-time officers.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Motion to approve construction code.
After. After the last meeting, the mayor, myself, the chief, we met with the Department of Construction Services out of Mearsford. And the chief stated the kind of layout we'd like for the office and the things that the house needed to be done. And they, together with the mayor, reviewed the building and gave us an estimate. And there's a few things that the city would need to do if it's necessary. And one of those things would be if there's any electrical work that needs to be updated. And the purchase of a new toilet. The other thing that we talked about was overhang to keep the building looking consistent with now the funeral home. And in talking with them, we asked them to bid it out both ways. And we'd like to add $21,000 after that to keep the overhang to look consistent to the rest of the, or to the washing room and comfort of the third building.
So the price would be $24,483?
Correct.
I think the big chunk was the roof.
Yes. Yes.
They had to do a pitch roof, swing it.
Do we know how much the electrical and the wiring is going to cost?
I do not at this time. I asked Axel what it would cost to do a panel change, it was twenty-five hundred. So, but I honestly, at this point, until they get into it, I won't know, because I'm not sure what kind of incident water heater they're gonna need to put in there. And what the electrical capacity for it is. If there's assets available for them too, so.
So we can't get a quote on that until?
I would have Axel go in there and look at it after it's done.
Can we finalize purchases of that, spelling?
Yes. Yes. No, it's not.
Did we talk to anybody in Alcestor, that does construction work? Be interested in working with them?
Well, Laverne Martin lives right next door to the building. So technically, he does live here. It's just that his dad has the construction company here. So Laverne Martin is the gentleman that bought Don and Amber's house. And I did talk to, I did talk to Laverne today, and I said, if the council moves through with this, when would they be able to start work on it? And he said, "We can have." And so I will confirm with Lauren to get a dumpster. Because we will need to have a dumpster there for the items that we come out.
And did they say how long it would take? It's gonna be done by August first, or?
Uh, they said it would only take, it wouldn't take very long at all.
So an entire panel workplace would be twenty-five hundred dollars? That's, and that's a lot of work.
And I'm not sure that's necessary, but...
Right, so chances are, that would be less. So at least that's a good number to use as a stake in the ground. So now you're twenty-four four, twenty-four four becomes twenty-six nine. So twenty-seven thousand dollars approximately. Because I could almost bet that there will be some wiring that would have to be worked, well...
They probably would light switches in a different spot or something.
And we will have to run through the CAT five.
Do what?
Our network cable.
Internet cable.
Or CAT six, I guess, now.
Yeah. But when they put it in like one of those on demand water heaters and stuff, they'll probably have to run for that.
A lot of those are wood tonight.
Yeah, littler ones, and it wouldn't have to be very big, it's only got one little area there, so.
All right, I will make the motion to approve the construction quote of twenty-four thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars for the PD shopping model by Department of Construction Services. Second penny funds later reverse by on these new proceeds.
All second. There's a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Let me know if the committee carries, let me throw up a page. Parker?
So that's me.
So the landfill, through the first month that I've been working there, there's been a hundred and five people that have showed up. And I'm pretty sure at least fifteen of those times was Dan. The cemetery, I've mowed once, weed whacked once. And it took four days to mow and weed whack. And started mowing again the day it got rained on. And then set us, marked out a tomb, and filled in a grave that was settling today. Yep.
Are there any things that you have questions about, or is everything going very smooth?
Everything's going real smooth. Smoother than I thought it was going to.
If you get to a situation where there's spraying, weed spraying that needs to be done, the golf course city has a, has a two-hundred gallon, two-hundred and fifty gallon sprayer.
Okay.
You have a tractor, if you could use electric?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I thought it would be certified to spray.
He's not certified to spray.
Okay.
And they're not open class now, right now.
What about the CBL, can you do that, or? I know there was an issue with the vehicle.
No, his dad made arrangements to get a truck for him.
Yeah, JFI out of Sioux Falls or out of Kansas said they'd let me borrow a truck. The company my dad works through.
Are they doing the test right now?
I, I, I don't know. I heard that they weren't, but that was a while back, when Sioux Falls was really hot, so. I don't, I guess I don't know what's going on now with it settling down a little bit.
Lonnie Johnson and myself are both certified in the spray, certified advocates.
Okay.
So maybe create some work with you or something, if you know what.
Yeah.
When you get some spray, leaves, some weeds in, if you're gonna do it.
Yeah, it's good to have you to keep your eyes open, if you see a bunch of noxious weeds.
So it would actually be good to spray it now, before a lot of the special weed grasses start growing.
Yeah, I don't know if this is considered a weed or not, but the southeast corner, where it's bare, it's just, it's pretty much just all this purple groundflower.
Oh, yeah, that's creepy charlie. And it's almost could possibly kill it.
Yeah, I was mowing over it today, and it didn't even look like it was touching me.
I know. And the thing is, when you mow it, you're propagating it.
Yeah.
It's little pieces of it that actually hit the ground, and turn into more creepy charlie, so.
So, yeah, from the road at the southeast corner, up like three of the sections, is all mowed, so that could actually get sprayed. It was mowed today, so I don't know how long you guys wanted to wait to maybe spray it. Before it dried out, or whatnot.
The only thing is, we're using a product that will kill anything with broadleaf, so if there are peonies that have been planted, or anything like that, you know, I'll have to...
Are the peonies up yet?
The what?
The peonies.
Oh, I have peonies under this wall, there is.
So. We'll end up really a bit harder after the hardest season I've over.
Okay.
And then we can just, when the flowers are all dead, we can just cover everything.
Okay, yeah, I know, I, a lot of the flowers that I've seen are either already dead from last year, or artificial. So I mean, there's a few stems coming out of the ground, no actual buds, though. So I don't know what those are gonna turn out to be.
One question the council asked me before you came is, have you spent any time in the wastewater plant yet? And I didn't, I was assuming no?
No.
Okay.
I've been busy mowing.
Yeah.
Did you guys, I can't hear you, sorry.
I asked if you'd spent any time at the wastewater plant, and he said no.
Is there anything you need from us?
Um, no, not really, I guess.
Okay. Well, I heard you're doing a fantastic job, so just keep up the good work.
Yeah, that was news to me, too.
Brown, I want your first counter.
I have no, we go.
Yeah.
They can make it nice before they die, they can. They won't talk back to you, I know.
What's that?
They won't talk back to you.
Yeah.
Okay. You got anything else?
Um, I didn't know if you guys wanted the records or anything for the first month, so I brought my notebook, just in case.
No, just giving the numbers like you did this morning.
Okay, also, there was one charge, um, for ten dollars to Josh Swanson, showed up last Saturday.
Okay.
So I didn't know.
You can give that money to one of them.
Okay, yeah, that's how I'm gonna pick up, I'll have to grab it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We were just gonna ask you to try. I'm gonna get started, I guess. One duty, sure. Question, if you're, sure.
So with everything going on with COVID, it was very difficult to have Diane and I and Trevor Lightfield attend the city council meeting. And they were scheduled to be here last month, but then that didn't work out. And our policy renewed on the first. So I just wanted to make this, and we need the policy. And I just wanted to let you know some of the changes that were made. If we need, if you don't agree with these changes, it's okay, let me know. And I will make whatever changes you recommend. But starting with this sheet, the policy itself is like forty-seven pages long. And I did not want to print that all out for you. So I really just gave you the sheet that has individual charges on it, to give you an idea. So on page three, our original quote was the coverage premium. And it was sixteen thousand fifty dollars. And that was done based on last year's information, before the, any of the values of the assets. The sheet that's also attached, which we talked about a little bit last month, is the next sheet that you have that's stapled. And the items in green, or that column in green, is where I sat down with Diane and looked at all the assets the city has, and made some recommendations for changes as far as the value that the asset is being insured for. So the items that you see in that column that are green are what this policy is based off of. And so that's why you will see a difference in the inland marine coverages. And, yeah, the inland marine coverages. The other thing that comes into play on this is also in inland marine, the difference between the proposed quote and the optional quote is in inland marine, we have five hundred dollars deductible. And what that was, was on like our buildings. So if we had a storm or something come through, and a building got damaged, the city would be responsible for the five hundred, and then anything above that. To save the city some money, I have Diane trace it out as a thousand dollar deductible. And so if you, that's what the second page of your handout is, the inland marine coverage, you know, differently, the deductible amount, I can choose to use the thousand dollar deductible as far as with business or building coverage. The next page, or the next item that was a difference was crime coverages. Our current policy was subject for twenty-five thousand dollar in-depth per situation. And I tried to think of reasons where this would be affected. My struggle was, I felt that twenty-five thousand was maybe not enough coverage, given the situations that we had seen earlier this year. So I did ask them to quote it with fifty thousand debt damage. And so for the amount of forty dollars, I decided that was for the needs of funds. So I did recommend that we increase the crime coverages to fifty thousand for coverage. And the other items, you can look through, or if you'd like to see the full policy, I can certainly email the full policy to you. But that is what I had the, had Diane or one of you can set up for our policy, twenty thousand forty-two dollars.
Okay, that was thousand dollar deductible.
On inland marine, but like on police car, or any vehicles that we have, that's still five hundred dollars. The thousand dollar deductible went to buildings.
And crime coverage is a thousand.
I, I did up the coverage on that. The crime coverage is a thousand. And that was always a thousand, it was quoted a thousand on each one.
So basically, we're going up to four thousand dollars.
Yes. And the majority of that is due to taking on the cemetery and the assets that go along with that. Taking on the new assets that we have purchased, and increasing the value, with the exception of this building, because we're not, or we are getting rid of this building in a couple of months, I did not revalue this building. I kept it, it's currently valued at a million eighty-three, I kept it at that.
We get to refine when we need it? Just turn it over to the owners?
We probably will get it, yes. So I guess the question I have for you, if you are happy with the values that we created the policy with, that would be great. If you want me to make any changes, this would be the time to write.
How do I define terrorism? You may not know.
And, uh... They do have a whole policy disclosure on terrorism. The act of terror, terror, uh, terrorism is any act that is certified by the Secretary of the Treasury, or Homeland Security, or the Attorney General of the United States to be an act that resolves the damage. In the case of an air carrier or a vessel, the premises on the United States is committed by an individual as part of an effort to thwart civilian population.
Well, the increase is actually less than the health of the people, so.
I would go with your recommendation.
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Golf course updates, kids in the house. Things are, things are going, but we've got a little problem right now with some big irrigation problems. That thing is only a year and a half, two years old, so I don't think it's anything serious. Sounds like we got a rock in there. So, how a rock got in it, I don't know, but, you know, maybe. The guy has been called, and he will come up. Golf course is open, we're practicing social distancing. And we've changed the rates on our cart rentals, so that people that don't live together, they need to have a rental golf cart each. But other than that, things are going pretty good.
So when you said you changed the rates, does that mean, even though it's just one person for a cart, you're still only paying for half the cart?
We're paying for a little more than half the cart.
Okay.
It used to be twelve dollars for a cart, now it's eight dollars for a person, per rider. And surveying the area golf courses, almost all the other golf courses are charging per rider now, so. I haven't heard anything about the summer library assistant. I don't think they're planning to do anything until June anyway, so we can probably wait until June, and then let... I don't think they're planning to do anything until June anyway, so we can probably wait until June and then let. Okay. Ready? That's it. Thank you, everybody. Leave it alone. Thanks.
So after the last council meeting, I was approached to look into how much, how long the council meetings are lasting. So I went back to 2012 and I gave you just regular council meetings. I did not break down special council meetings. And on those meetings that were greater than three point two five hours, I indicated as to why. There was probably a special topic that was discussed or interviews or something along those natures.
So initially, one of the reasons why I was interested in this, I spent some time, I looked at Beersford's website and looked at their minutes for the number of months. And I thought to myself, okay, so they're meeting twice a month. We're getting paid by the month and by the meeting. So if we, if our meeting pays forty dollars a month, if we said the meeting pays twenty dollars. Yeah, if our meeting pays forty dollars per meeting, if we said twenty dollars per meeting and had to meet every month, it'd be the same cost.
That was what Lyndon and I had discussed too was to get the meeting shorter, do two things, not then also to put it, to speed things up. The government doesn't move so slowly and we meet twice a month, we should be able to get more done. And we also talked about the cost because I was concerned too. We don't want to double our salary to go change the resolution fees and change it to twenty dollars a meeting so there's no additional costs.
I'd rather be here for four hours and twice a month, two hours at a time. If you look at that sheet that Pat did up to the last day, two thousand twelve, twenty twelve, from, if you're going to two thousand fifteen, twenty fifteen, there's been two meetings that have lasted for our. Each of those two meetings, there was interviews for, one was interviewed, well, both of them for armor personnel. That takes a lot of time. Another thing that takes a lot of time is it takes a lot of time for you guys to make a decision. I'm sorry, I've got, I was trying to get on different things here. And when you're talking about that pool, you're talking almost twenty-five minutes about so many pool before you could ever come up with a decision.
It's your decision.
When you do that, I understand there's a lot of stuff to say, but say it and get it done with and move on. You're repeating yourself. That's why these meetings are lasting so long. I don't want to be here two, two times a month. If you look at most of the meetings, they, they're lasting anywhere from, they start out at three, two, two point two, three minute or three hours, one point two five, probably average two and a half hours. And if, if you would work at it, you could get it done that way.
So you want us to work it out, but not take up any time and not talk about it?
I don't, okay.
We won't, we just could discuss this.
I did put a question out on the list serve after the last meeting and I asked the cities that do have two meetings, pug you for your agenda, because I wasn't sure what items you would want to have on the front meeting and what you want on the second. And a couple of the gals sent me their agendas and basically the agendas are exactly the same. They still have the department heads come, they still have them talk. It's just a question of policies on each department. I'm looking for suggestions if you guys do decide how you would like me to do the agenda differently or how you want, how you want the agenda to be.
So a lot of months are already coming in anyway. Seems like at least half the months, if not more, we have to call special meetings because, and if we have decreased the cost to twenty dollars a meeting and do the two months meeting, it should in the long run save money and save time and be more efficient. We can get more done in them. And I agree, I thought about that too, how to do the agenda, like do we do warrants over time?
I would only do warrants once a month. It's, I didn't know what topics, how you wanted to split that out. If you wanted department heads at the first meeting of the month or if we do warrants at the first, then you want department heads on the second. I mean, there's, there's room to modify. That's throughout each side goal.
I don't think I would want department heads to have to come twice a month. I'm sure they're already, not coming to any place.
Half, half become one meeting and half become another meeting. They don't all have to report the same, the same.
And if they want to come to both meetings, they can. Uh, do you still do that?
Well, I'm not in favor of two meetings a month unless there's a special meeting, but I'd be here.
And if this is something that the council would like to entertain, then we would have to do an ordinance change. So Sam would have to track that.
I think this is at least somewhat idle and I appreciate the fact that you had this information because to me, it seems like we're here a lot longer than that, but evidently we're not.
Time flies when you have the fun.
Yeah, there are a lot of two and less hour meetings. I mean, a two hour meeting is not four months a month. Even three hour meetings are bad. It's when you're grabbing on to that four hour.
So you don't want any special meetings?
When we do, the budget will anticipate twenty meetings. So if you take out twelve, that's eight.
So eight months out of the year.
You have eight special meetings.
So technically if we did this, we shouldn't have to have a special meeting. Problem.
If you did two meetings a month, you would not have to have special meetings. Or the chance of having a special meeting would reduce a lot less. It would only be an extraordinary situation happen.
That's just how I feel about it. We're only doing it eight months out of the year. Why not do it twelve months out of the year? Get in and out of here and out, out on that. I would be worried.
Let's see what the ordinance looks like in the committee for next meeting. In June, I think.
Yes.
Can you say where any special meeting made them? No, we didn't. We didn't set it.
Well, Sam, how much time do you think you're dropping our?
This one should be pretty. Okay, so one day we could have that with.
I'm not for against it except I don't want to go to two meetings and you still take three or four hours.
No, I don't.
That, that can't happen.
No, I think we have to just make sure we get things, I mean, these other times, don't go to meetings like this.
Take, take a look at Beersford's minutes.
Their meetings sometimes are not even an hour.
Exactly. Take a look at Beersford's minutes for two, three, four months in a row and just look at their minutes. I mean, read through it and you'll see. They're hot to our needs.
Maybe we talk about things we don't even need to have a rule of the agenda. Is that possible?
That's possible or it's possible that they're.
Or not reporting their daily minutes. Well, but the time is still recorded. So the amount of time that they're there is still recorded. So I mean, unless they're lying about that, I mean.
No, sure not. Probably.
Please, please take a look at that information. Might give you food for thought before we get together and have to go on this.
Okay, so you want no action till June? Okay. Okay, dumpster driving and discussion. Dumpster driving?
So there's been a lot, a lot of hate about dumpster driving. Do we pass ordinance or do we not? I think they can go need to pass ordinance and I did some research. Want to get real technical when we bring the dumpsters out and bring our items to the dumpster. That they're essentially ceding their traction to the city. So it's city property. The city owns it, takes it in disposal with due course, but it is city property lots of the dumpsters. So we should be able to simply post saying as well as a policy, stay out of dumpsters. I can write you up a post if you want, but essentially stay out of dumpsters. This is for drop off only. There's no material property that's given to the city or ceded to the city. Not that we're going to need to, but the chief has the ability to issue citations for petty theft and or trespass if somebody's caught in the dumpster. I mean, I think obviously like we do most times, you trust the chief discretion. If you were to tell individuals, hey, knock it off, I can't do this. And it happens more than twice. Whatever it feels appropriate, we can take action. But the bottom line is I don't think you need to pass an ordinance specifically prohibiting this. God, you have a way to enforce not trespassing or taking what is technically city property.
So it's compulsory if they go into the dumpster and it's petty theft.
Yeah, yeah, in theory, I think that's what it is. I mean, I think you.
So what are the issues? Somebody giving birth to the dumpster?
The issues are we have parents who are allowing their young children to go into the dumpster to get out the treasures for the parents. And unfortunately, the kids are small and so Joe Lo comes by, chucks something in the dumpster, may not see child in dumpster.
Well, and that's my, my, my biggest problem is that somebody goes in there and gets hurt and wants to. They want to trespass to the city. So I think you incelate yourself from that somehow if you say that it's, you know, it's prohibited and be that which I'm not for.
And we have gone out and first we started with kids and we said, cannot be in the dumpster. And then the kids brought mom and dad over and dad said, well, I'm right here. I'm watching this. So my kid can be in the dumpster. And it's like, no, you can't.
So we come on a quick little sign.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like the public can come and it's probably like, it doesn't make people watch.
Okay.
I see the very last paragraph says, oh, the sections mentioned above should be effective. Shall, shall be effective immediately.
Shall, yeah, that's shall. Great. Yeah, sorry about that. Should say shall be effective.
Yeah, so I don't check the city either.
Oh, I didn't even, sorry, Jamie. David, that city, you can say else. Guess what?
So we are reviewing.
Sections probably twenty, twenty days.
So if you look in section one, only rolls and one and two remain. And then the rest of section one goes away. And then sections two.
One and two.
One and two remain. Three, four, go away. And then section two, which is your ordinance, the state authority ordinance remains. And then section five. So essentially what you've got is the definitions of sections, which you really don't need to report to each kind of. You are left with sections of city own property where the mayor to make the decisions. And then you need section two as the automatic repealer, which you can repeal it earlier. And then lastly, section five, I felt that, you know, when we agreed upon what the final would be for the violations, you still needed to have some teeth in the event we had to enforce the park staying closed.
So businesses are going to go back completely to.
Yes, yeah. And so businesses, there's businesses where I agree with who members fully told to shut down. The governor's executive orders amounted to a strong, strong, strong recommendation. And then if we're back to normal plan, she's still encouraging all the behaviors that were mentioned by the CDC. She's pulled back on some of that a little bit. So.
Yeah, you get on how this will work is you, you're not lose, you have to start with a second reading. My reading of the law is because it went in as an emergency health ordinance. Once you do the second reading, it's signed and published as a meeting in effect. But if for summary from the law is in fact that we can't undo an emergency ordinance with the emergency ordinance and you publish, the effect is that twenty days after the application, you can appeal it. So you kind of publish just to make sure you're okay. And the other thing with this ordinance is you can have a first reading at night. A week could go by and have been the things could get a lot worse. You don't have to have a second reading. You can wait on the second reading. You could probably argue that we waited on qualification after you had your second reading if you really needed to before you totally canceled. But I thought that given the governor's plan that they were writing out, if you at least had this drafted in that first reading, you would be better able to repeal the ordinance quickly. The second reading, you have to have much.
Is there a legal that we can make a motion to approve the reasons? The first reading of course, twenty twenty national.
I want to make a motion to approve the first reading, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty national. In ordinance of the city of San Francisco, revealing sections of ordinance twenty twenty national. Second.
Do you have a motion in second and discussion? Call of favor.
Aye.
Go. Motion to adjourn. Uh, direct to session. Anybody need to adjourn?
Nope.
No? Okay. Our attorney, Matt, that's, which to the first question.
So we have two months left until the study. And so Wanda and I went and into the rooms and kind of hit the major areas that we need some attention. We've identified who the people are, so the various things that are stored underneath the stage, so we will make contact with them and get a date when those items will be removed. Um, I still have not communicated with the senior citizens center to see about the pool table, but I will do that. Um, with respect to bleachers, is those bleachers up there? Um, I don't know if you would like to surplus them, if you want me to research if the school has a need for them to have up at the ball fields or at some other location, since I have been in the city, those have never moved. They've been up there since twenty eighteen.
So you're out to school, you're going to school.
The store, um, will be available?
I know, I've read that too. So they are-
That they are said that's a nice thing.
So if that is the case, and you would like to surplus them and give them to another agency, another governmental agency, then that can be done. Otherwise, if you choose, then maybe if you choose not to do that, then we would have to surplus them and appraise them and decide how we're going to get rid of them. Uh, so we have scoreboards, so that is a score, those two scoreboards are from the elementary school when they put in a new scoreboard. And so we have a scoreboard and a controller, and then we also have scoreboards up there, and they still work, and we still have the controller. So, uh, like, I don't know, is that something you're interested in taking down and surplusing? Getting rid of? I'm not exactly sure how we would get it down. Um, we probably, there'd be some expense involved, but I'll have somebody come in and do it for us. Um, I didn't know about basketball hoops. Do you want me to figure out if, would you like me to have these taken down and we surplus them? Or I, I don't?
I think we should definitely surplus anything that we can. And those, those two scoreboards look like they're in pretty decent shape, but I don't really know about that one up there, but-
That one is super vintage.
What?
It's super vintage. But I mean, it still works. Um, the plug-in has a little personality, but if you get a plug-in, it's all right. And I think that's probably a plug-in issue more than the scoreboard issue.
Oh, sure.
I think we have to be careful about this, and sure, the buyer probably would not care, but some of these things might be fixtures, like you can put in-
Do you think a scoreboard is, I mean, a couple hoop is a fixture?
Might be, yeah. I mean, it depends on its, I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I don't know how many South Dakota cases there are of basketball hoops, but if you're taking the, taking the handles off the basket, that's actually not-
Well, I realize that, but I'm in an education facility, you probably just don't want that.
No, you're, you're right, I didn't. If they don't care, they don't care.
Well, that would be, wouldn't that be okay to have dialogue with them and find out, is it all right with you if we take all the basketball hoops and all the electronics off the walls and surplus them for extra fun for the city? Sure would be.
Uh, then, as I mentioned last week, we had, or last month, we had a lot of dishes. Uh, a lot of miscellaneous mismatched glass plates. Uh, there's a few serving utensils, not a lot, but some. Uh, there's silverware, maybe, I know the golf course does have a lot of silverware, but maybe they'd be interested in the silverware that we have. Um, but Wanda thought maybe we should talk to the senior citizens center if they have a need for some of the dishes. But, and then we put Lani's name next to the Christmas decorations, those are actually our new ones that we hang down on the street, so. The items that are engraved there is the items that I feel we should probably surplus. Um, when I say table, there's a large expandable wooden table downstairs. I don't know if we have the leaves for it, so-
I'm not sure.
And, and it would need some love. It needs to be, if you're gonna use it as a dining table, it needs to be remarinated or sanded down. We have a very old piano. Uh, we have some miscellaneous shovels that I don't think the police department would want, so we need to get rid of those. Uh, we have some shelving.
Okay, wooden or metal?
Uh, we have metal, metal shelf.
The shelving, yeah.
And some of this is library shelving that Dee had us, and I, I don't have any for it. So, um, we have the nineteen fifty-three international fridge downstairs. We have a pool that we took out of the park, and we're back in that storeroom, or the open shelter of the park, which, if you like those and we want to use them as for a public import in our new place, that's fine too. We have a small wooden stage, uh, it's just five-sided wood that gets you up about a foot off the ground, but that's downstairs in the kitchen. We have some, uh, old hunch, pine harness, don't use that anymore. Uh, we have a griddle, plug-in griddle, which I think is up there.
The Lions Club on that?
The griddle? Yeah.
That's the huge one downstairs.
Oh, yeah, never mind. That griddle, uh, there is a huge, I'm not sure if it was Lions Club or with history on it, um, I don't think it works. It hasn't been used since I've been down here, or since I've been here. We have a lot of vintage metal trays and then just some miscellaneous, so I guess I'm asking your input, how you would like to get rid of or dispose of these assets? Um, I will talk to, uh, Koda and see how they feel about scoreboards and, um, the basketball hoops, but-
I think the people that have phone numbers and you know, you should contact them and just say, if you want this stuff, it needs to be out here by July fifteen, so Saturday eight, well, well in advance of August first.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just-
If you want to come get it.
I'm just being polite. I may not make it, but I'm just shooting for it. So, yeah, I, I agree, but-
Yeah.
The easiest thing to do, which is go to public auction? Just help me with anything?
I don't know if we have enough for an auction, you know, if, if we don't do, if we don't do the, um, the things that have a lot of value. But, I mean, I hope, however, however you want to do it.
I don't know, because I can exhaust it with this, or this is just highlighted, I mean-
This is everything.
At this, yeah. I mean, I didn't count the plates and the silverware and everything like that to tell you how much we got, I just saw a lot of these mismatched. Um, it's, they do need to be reinforced. It's been a long time.
Well, then we need a motion to clear this stuff is surplus, but we literally have to get that out here.
Unless you want me to talk with Alphona first to see how they feel about those items and then move it out once, or?
Maybe that would be wise.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want a motion on that or not?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna finish that.
That's the report. Let's rethought of that, I was gonna say two. I still-
So, um, you, you want to look a little bit at the forum? Do you think this is?
Yeah, I talked to Pat about it too. Um, I looked at Arizona ordinances for residential, I think the schools are residential zone. Track one on the north side looks like it's fifty-four feet wide, and on the lot, I calculated roughly forty-six feet wide. And when I called Pat and I talked with Alphona Kay, um, I don't know that that lot width is appropriate under section four point zero nine of our, our lot area zoning regulation. So I called, Pat was kind of looking at me, cloud engineering's, um, phone number I called, um-
Tim?
Kim, yeah, I called Kim, I didn't get an answer, but I left a voicemail. And I explained what I just explained to you, so, um, I don't, I think it would probably be easier for them to replat this, especially since right now, school district owns it, it is their burden to do that, and we should accept something that is not in line with our ordinances, and we've got to change the ordinances or whatever, so. I understand there's, in fact, sent me some pictures, I understand for building on track one, and that was kind of the reason for why that track was platted the way it is, but this is gonna be a lot of headache if we're accepting something that is not conforming with our current zoning ordinances.
I guess I question why we would be the ones that would be doing it anyways? What do you mean, no?
No, we, we don't, but, um, the, uh, the approval of it, the approval of the platting is, or brings us up to this contradiction of our ordinance and so forth.
So they're gonna have to come up with a different idea?
Right, exactly, because right now, it's all, as I understand, it's all platted, and no item, right? I mean, it's one piece of property, so we can tell them to go back and subdivide it in a way that is in conformity with our zoning ordinances.
Pretty tough.
Yeah, it might be, but, you know. You could, yeah, I mean, if you tack it on the track two, you might not have a problem.
Okay. Okay. Uh, finally, I'll have to tell the H P.
Um, so we will have an audit this next week. Um, the auditors are going to do it remotely. Um, I've already submitted a lot of paperwork that they wanted. Uh, then they will give me a list of checks to pull, and they will take our receipt books, and we just run them across the street to their office, and then one of their employees will carry it down to either the million or employee. So that's how, at this point, we're gonna be doing it. Um, we got the signage done for the park that was requested, so that's laminated and installed.
Thank you.
Um, like I said, this month, I spent a lot of time reviewing the insurance paperwork with Diana and Trevor. Um, I have been working on the website, working on my layout, getting my input in there. As soon as I feel that it's a comfortable spot to let go, then I will convert it to a public address, private address right now. Uh, I did the supplies run for the golf course. Um, enough material to get us going, um, and then we'll decide how we're gonna handle the weekend that has left on there. Um, I did a very entry court, which was requested, uh, just to see some history. I met with all the malt beverage license holders. Hillbillies is not going to renew their malt beverage license, so it's just the golf course, total stop, and, um, a sister quick stop. So I met with each of them and got the paperwork signed and ready for that. I've had, attended a lot of conference calls with the governor, and also a lot of Zoom meetings that have been hosted by the municipality to keep the cities updated with what's happening, recommendations on so forth, and the whole whole thing, so. Um, I have been doing some cemetery work. Uh, people have been calling in, and they're wanting history, graves, where are they? Um, maybe some issues on graves. Parker's been really easy to, to work with, um, so when he gets more acronimated on things, I will definitely turn over to finding graves and that stuff when people call, but right now, it's a little bit cumbersome, and I have to figure out a way to make it a little easier for him, and then just-
Will, will he eventually have a computer system so he can digitize some of these things?
I'm, I'm leaning towards like an iPad for him, yes, so that he could actually be out on cemetery and be able to locate a plot. The thing that's cumbersome about it, you know, and I applaud Larry for putting the tiny effort into drive and excel the cemetery, indicating roads and plots, it's no small task. The thing that is challenging is, um, uh, he did separate spreadsheets for lots that are owned versus lots that have people buried in them. And so I'm not sure sometimes where someone is actually going to be, if someone is needing information on, and wasn't always consistent, if all lots that are owned are in the own spreadsheet but not in, if they're not buried yet, so inevitably only get old. But I'm grateful for the time that I have spent out in the cemetery, because I, I remember a lot of the stone, and I have a general idea of where a stone is if somebody calls me, so I am usually located, but, so, anyway. Um, and an update on the community center to date, we have three million seventy-nine thousand pledged and a hundred and one thousand of our security.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, you read already, answered your question, but have you heard anything about them? Are they, are they selling it, is it gonna reopen it?
I did stop and talk to him, he was using the, um, he was using the roll-offs when we were having the community cleanup, and so I went over and I talked to him, and I asked him about the malt beverage license at that time, and he told me that he did have some people that were interested. Um, so that's when I asked him, do you want to renew your license? And he's like, no, I'm gonna leave it up to whoever the owner is, so. So there is talk, but I don't know how serious.
About the communities and the community center, are they, have they heard?
Um, the last two weeks, we've been working with the architects, just the committee and the architects, to get, um, something that we hope is in our ballpark. We, on Thursday, will have a conference call with the visions contractor to see, um, what their thoughts are. As chance, the project, the school did a project of remodeling the bathrooms, and the visions contractor came in to get a bill for it. And I didn't know how big visions was, so I didn't say anything about our community center, and this gentleman said that the vision is company of the father-son, and I was doing it for father. And so, um, he's like, yeah, we really want to continue working with you on our community center. And I told him where we were at and what we were doing, and, um, so he's anxious to meet with us and offer, um, um, or hands on ground things that can be done to make-
So you're not giving that?
No.
I've been asked, like, we're not giving that?
No, not, not at all. He, he really wants to continue working with us, so.
So what was the fellow's name in the once vision?
I'm sorry, I know I should have asked it, and I couldn't make it out on his signature on, on the check.
Would it be resulted?
I don't know. I think about you seeing, see if we can make it out. It's kind of a-
Do you have the website?
The visions inspection.
And you might have a project. Thank you.
Do you have an estimated, um, start date or end date for the website?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't work on it and I can. Um, so I mean, I am actively working on it. I, I want to get it out as soon as I can. I will have the ordinances on there. I'll have forms on there, so. I can't give you an estimate right now. Yes, yes, this year, definitely, so.
Within a few months, probably.
I hope to, if you know what to do, depends what happens in that life.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay. So, motion to approve the 2020, 2021 malt beverage license. Allow Mayor Glass to sign alcohol purchase agreement.
Did Tullis Park ever decide they were just gonna do malt beverages? Didn't they ask for this amount of time to do?
They have asked, we needed to for a liquor license, but they have not given that direction until the council.
In the past, we've considered that as somewhat competing with ourselves, uh, because of the liquor store.
No, I understand that. I was just wondering.
Jeff was in and I thought he would say something to me, but he did not, so.
So we see the printout?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020, the 2021 malt beverage license and allow Mayor Glass to sign alcohol purchase agreement.
I'm sorry.
Who is that?
Melissa.
Okay, we have a motion on the second. Any discussion? All in favor? I am in both. Motion through. Favor over against the process of our employee discussion.
So this is a question that came up a while ago, um, and I did not know how to think, um, if they were set up to, to handle that for us, and they are. So we did a little, um, communication with, um, Don, Don Bigboom at the bank. Um, they do offer it. We could utilize it if we wanted. Um, it would be a $10 charge for, um, each payroll. So it'd be $260, three 26 payrolls. Not all the employees would have to participate if they didn't want to. I did talk to the auditors and I asked how they felt about doing, um, direct deposit. And basically what Terry Post told me is to have each employee that's interested fill out a form, attach a voided check, so there's no question which account the money is supposed to go into. And, and that would be the trail. Uh, one would have the ability, our payroll software can either create the NUT file, which is the audit file that goes to the bank to make the deposit. Uh, otherwise the bank, because we have online banking, they offer online banking. She can log in and upload the information that way. So.
It's gonna cost $260 a year, you believe?
Correct. It's $10, it's a paper.
Oh, it's a paper?
Yes, it's a 26 paper.
So it's not based on how many deposits there are, should it be?
No, it's based on your payroll.
Is that just people that have accounts at this bank?
No, you could do it on a basis as well.
You could go to any bank to one.
Correct.
I was gonna write it.
Does that make your guys' job easier? Is that, will that be easier for you to do?
I have no idea. I mean, I don't think it'll be that internal. It'll just be a couple more steps.
One city website is up, the way to do online bill pay. Does the bank, our bank set up to do that?
We use a third party for online bill pay.
So this is just something the employees will?
They would just ask if it would be an option.
The, the employees have asked for that?
Yes.
They would learn their wisdom?
Well, we, the, at the last paper, we, um, questioned the, the full timing. And it was. At three, at, you know, at two. I didn't get out, I didn't watch, and one didn't care.
My opinion, I guess it would be a stronger, yes, we mean this.
Would it be just waiting until four, one?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if it's only three or something like.
Three and two, but it's only half seven. Or I guess not, it's gonna be everything, right?
You know, if the council decided to make it something that we're offering, yes, I would offer it to all the employees that they get or trying to sign up, even the seasonal. I mean, if we didn't have to, um, cut a check for them and.
How much does a plot take to cut a check?
Um, I buy checks once a year. Um, I buy a thousand checks at a time. Um, I don't know. I mean, because we're still gonna have to go through the procedure, you know, as far as coupling and payroll and writing reports and everything. It's just a question of, um, the bigger thing is contacting people and letting them know that the checks are ready and come and get them. So we send the texts out right now to the lifeguards, wherever the pool manager is. Right now we're sending it to land and coming to get them, we're all.
How much are the checks? Just, I'm not sure that the checks themselves are, the bar on the checks.
Probably at least a hundred and four dollars.
Four, four thousand. And you probably just half of those may be in payroll. So it's customers fifty some dollars a year compared to 260. And not too many people are excited about the check. Well, in keeping in mind, you know, we do direct deposit at custom coils. I still get a document, every single paper. It's just not a check. It's just not a embossed check that says custom coils are in. It's just a blank piece of paper. It looks like a check. It even says void, zero dollars and everything. But, and it's got all my, you know, deductions and everything all the way on it. So you're still gonna have costs involved in it, but not that piece of paper. And we would just kind of put no action on that thing until we get more people. Okay, reminder that makes longer room. Hope audit meeting 67th of 2020, HRC update. Well, we just, uh, we're supposed to have a meeting and we opted not to because of our layers situation. We have done a number of different things. Uh, Mike Burke has purchased one of the lots. Which, I know is also involved in this, um, gas line situation. And just a couple of days ago, Jared and Nathan and we were, and myself, we went and met at the foreplex and looked it over. And there are a number of things there that need some coming. Um, we're, we're debating on how to deal with that. We wanna do it as inexpensively as possible, but we don't necessarily feel that free slave labor is the way to do it. So we may put in some time, uh, the three of us need, maybe quote unquote hired to put in some extra time because maybe he has a little bit more of that right now because of the stuff that he normally is involved in that he's not involved in with the players. Um, specifically, there's a tree that needs to come down. We're gonna take that down ourselves. There are a bunch of spirea bushes that are, they've got to come out. Whoever put in rock around the rear specifically of the building didn't, didn't adequately provide enough depth for that rock. So there's gonna be some serious backbreaking labor involved in removal of the lot rock, digging out and then putting rock back. One of the things that Jared and Nathan were asking for permission from the city is to temporarily put a pile of that rock. I'm gonna say just north of the northernmost driveway on Lee Drive. And it's not gonna be there forever, but it's gonna have to be there for a while because we're gonna slowly move it from that pile back, back to the back of the building. So that's something that we would ask the city for permission to do. We also would like to have the city, if they would bring a truck and just leave the truck there for a little while so that we could cut down that. So cedar tree is just in, just in our side of the fence line in the back and it's not, it needs to go. Um, and so we'd like to get rid of that, cut it out, throw it in the truck, have it hauled out to the landfill. We'll, we'll get in touch with them for that. As far as the putting the rock there, I think you guys have authorized that in the past for the HRC where that same thing, putting, putting rock in that location, they thought that's where they made it sound. You remember anything about that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. When that thing was built, there was supposed to be four inches of rock put all the way around that building. And that was just barely enough rock just to cover the ground, just there, that part of the place, just a bit. But they were never forced to come back and do it the way they were supposed to do it. So we've got some water issues in the back and we're working on addressing those. And some of that's gonna be done with very, very little, you know, expense. But some of this is gonna, it's gonna be through. Rocks cheap, you know, it's the labor that's gonna.
It's the weight.
Yeah, and, and we're good, we're gonna get some compensation whether, I guess it depends on how much time I put in. I'm known to give up my time, but I know Nathan's gonna end up putting in enough time. He needs some compensation for what he's gonna be doing, so we'll be looking at that. Aside from that, there isn't an actual meeting date right now. Um, we really don't have anything to meet about because the one thing we dealt with was the Burke lot and that was dealt with on a phone meeting. So that's about it.
Okay, thank you. How's that community building underway?
Like I said, we're meeting, um, Thursday with visions and the architects to figure out if we have a building that's in our consideration.
You, you had said 101,000 in deposits, right?
Yes, 101,360 in deposits.
And what's, what was the pledge amount again? I'm sorry. Okay, um, so do you need to ask your, ask your board with comments, say anything you want to add?
Um, did we make communication with the U.S.? About the HRC?
I did not.
Okay, no worries.
But is, uh, is Parker automatically in that next to you or not?
He's being a volunteer.
I don't know. It would be, I mean, let's say shortage. I mean, well, of course.
Shortage would be a better way to.
Now, it's not gonna be short anymore.
Volunteer is different than paid workers. Mr. Volunteer.
Yes.
Unpaid.
Okay, so we don't have anybody in executive session? Anybody in executive session?
No.
No? Okay, they're all looking to adjourn.
No.
Will you put that in words? I move that we adjourn. Two seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Most very senior gentlemen, please. 222.
Thank you, sir.
I need to.
Dust.
No, city related issues too.
Okay. Let me give my thoughts in a row. Oh.